Good evening and welcome to Monday, September 3rd, 2024. City Council meeting at 111 East Maple and the council chambers. The invocation tonight will be given by Laura Dean Wiley, Chair of the God at Center Committee at Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity. And I almost said you're the Chair of the Planning Commission right there when I saw that, so please forgive me. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, I just want to thank you for the fall. Thank you for just the wonderful weather that we've had, the success of Santa Calagon that is so important to our city and our tourism and our revenue. Lord, just thank you for letting us put a good show on for those that visit. Lord, continue to bless us. Give us a sense of purpose, unity, and opportunity to share only the best of Independence. It's in your name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Vaught?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, here. And that brings us to, if I could have a moment of personal privilege from the members of the council. The City Council is aware that the behavior exhibited by a member of the Planning Commission during the August 27th meeting of 2024. The council has discussed this and we take this matter very seriously. And we are actively working to address the situation because this does not represent who we are as a city. So that's our statement. There'll be more forthcoming, but we just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Then we have citizens' requests. Any citizen's requests? None of those? Okay. So that brings us to our proclamation and it is Resolution 24-761. And would you like to read the proclamation or should I go first with this? Go with this? So tonight, Jamie Neal is recognized as the I-Star Award winner of this month, so congratulations. And here are some reasons for your nomination. From your supervisor, Natalie Tan, she said, "I'd like to nominate Jamie Neal at the Municipal Court as an I-Star Employee of the Month. I can tell you how much work she does and she's always busy. Yet, anytime myself or other coworkers need help, you are willing to reach out and help them regardless of your workload. Your manager says she is always willing to help us regardless. She's always helping attorneys, defendants, and other staff members while helping to maintain the flow of the courtroom and its dockets. She's always kind to others and goes above and beyond to get things done." A specific example of her performance. "My fellow employees sometimes need documents signed by the prosecutor and judge and Jamie is always the first person in the court willing to jump up and help us find them and obtain those needed signatures. I'm not the first person to notice, I'm not the first person in our department to notice the outstanding job that Jamie always does." So Madam City Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the I-Star Independence Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the Service Recognition Committee has selected Jamie Neal, Senior Court Clerk with the Municipal Court Department, as the I-Star Award recipient for September 2024. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Independence, Missouri as follows. Section 1 that the City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri joins in recognizing Jamie Neal as the City of Independence I-Star Award recipient for 2024. Passed this third day of December 2024 by the City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri."
Thank you very much and congratulations. And we just have one piece of business. If I can get a motion in a second, we can pass this resolution and then we'll proudly present it to you. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the measure passes six in favor and zero opposed. So Jamie, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you very much.
Second?
Thank you very much. Are there any councilmembers wishing to pull items for separate consideration? Anyone else want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Item number 24-762.
All right. Anybody else? Items for separate consideration. Can we have a motion in a second to consider this consent agenda? Separate item 24-762. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item 24-762. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 24-762.
There is a motion and a second. Councilmember, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give us a synopsis of what this is?
Yes, I would be glad to. So Councilmember Stewart and members of the council, this is a resolution in support for a developer who is seeking tax credit applications from the state of Missouri. The project they are pursuing is to build multifamily housing unit generally located in the area of 35th Terrace and 40 Highway. The site of the old Anderson School that some may remember was an issue getting demolished and torn down about a decade ago. So this would backfill that space with approximately 60 total units in that area. This is not seeking a rezoning of the council. It's not a, you know, typical Planning Commission item, anything like that. This is simply the developer getting a policy statement from the city in support of their application as they go before the state of Missouri to seek approval for these tax credits.
What exactly do those tax credits do?
They provide reimbursement to the developer for the housing construction expenses. In exchange, the, the project does have some income restriction eligibility items on it, so pricing control of, you know, the amount, maximum amount you could make in salary or income to be eligible to live in this housing development.
Were they, you may not know the answer to this. Was the Independent School District asked on their opinion on this? Were they asked for the support of it?
I believe the developer did send a solicitation to the school district asking for their, a similar action, a letter of support. I don't know if it made it to the Board of Education, but I was copied on a response from the superintendent stating that he would not be providing a letter of support for that project.
Did he give you any reason why?
He cited concerns about adding additional overcrowding or burdens to some of the nearby schools. Didn't, as I recall, the email didn't have specific data points in it, but that was cited as a concern.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, only at what's, or councilman involved?
Castle.
Yeah, Castle Park.
Are they at capacity or close to capacity? Does anyone know?
I'm not, I'm not certain.
Okay. Please proceed.
Just to come in, I do know that that's the personal opinion of the superintendent, not the board's position. So the board hasn't taken any, any position on that, so.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just for clarification, when those tax credits are issued, they are time limited, meaning those restrictions for income last for only a period of time and then they are lifted and those return to market rate. Is that my understanding, usually 20 years?
That's my understanding as well, yes.
And my next question is, we have a number of families, and the last number that I had was 900 families in the Independent School District who are really housing challenged, meaning there are already kids in our school district but don't have places that their family can stay for stable housing. Is that a fair recognition of a challenge that our city is having?
That's a fair recognition and that was also supported in the city's most recent update to the housing study. This is my term, not the housing study's term, but that missing middle for those individuals who are employed, gainfully employed, but don't have income levels necessarily, you know, to live in high-end apartment or to go get a single-family residence. So this provides a housing option to, to those individuals beyond some of the issues you just referenced.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
As a business owner who struggled from being shut down during COVID for months and it taking two years at least to build my business back to where it was prior to being shut down, I understand how you can have an income and still not always have money to pay the bills. Things have only gotten worse as the prices of literally everything have gone up. We have a working class of homeless and people still have jobs and income that still don't cover the cost of rent. This company seems to manage their properties well and from everything I can see, they're income-based, not Section 8 or subsidized, so I'm in favor of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else further discussion? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I believe I was pulling it up, that we did receive a letter from the Community Service League in, in support of such, and I'm certainly willing to support Councilwoman Vaught's knowledge of her district.
Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just wanted to, in case there's any, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can't. I'm sorry.
I just represented the developer.
I understand. There was an opportunity earlier if you wanted to present in citizens' comments, but we can't now.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this item passes six in favor, zero opposed. That then brings us to the regular agenda. We've got a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application by Carolyn Rogers to rezone the property at 1552 East US 24 Highway from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on July 23rd of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is to rezone a property at 15552 East US 24 Highway from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family. The lot originally did have a residential structure that was built back in the 40s. The property was zoned commercial back in the mid 60s. More recently, the structure has been used as a beauty salon. The owner of that particular business is retired and wishes to live there as a single-family structure. I have no new information to provide. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a new information-only public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing on proposed property tax rates to be set by the City of Independence for the fiscal year.
Nope.
24-087, second reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 1552 East US 24 Highway. Second reading.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll on 24-087.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-087 passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to ordinances. The first ordinance is 24-043. Madam City-
Mayor, there was a-
Oh, there is a public hearing. Thank you very much for that correction. Please forgive me. And it's a full public hearing, so we will open the public hearing.
A public hearing on proposed property tax rates to be set by the City of Independence for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, based on the current assessed valuation by Jackson and Clay Counties. Full public hearing.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief presentation tonight for you for the property tax levy. And then if any citizens are here to speak, then we also have an opportunity for that tonight. So since the property tax levy rates were first advertised in the newspaper for this hearing tonight, we have received final valuations from Jackson County. And so up here I do have, you know, some different, different amounts for the final levy rates that I just wanted to provide to you tonight, and we'll have to do an amendment to the ordinance on the final reading so that we can have those updated numbers. But for the final amounts, for general revenue, the valuations did go down slightly from what we were initially presented, so you'll see a slight increase to that levy rate there of .3325 per $100 of valuation. And then on our Public Health and Recreation, it's .1567. And the Independent Square Special Business District stays the same as last year at .5755. So our assessed valuations, you see in 2023, a significant jump over 2022. I think we're all aware of what's happened, you know, with the news media coverage that we've seen over that. And then 2024 preliminary, you see 1.893, and then that decreased slightly in the final numbers to 1.872. Just real quickly, for everyone's benefit in the room, State Tax Commission has issued a ruling to Jackson County, you know, warning them that they did not follow state statute in physical inspections on properties that increased more than 15% in 2023 over 2022. So at this point, Jackson County has not provided the city with any updated valuations for 2023. So we are moving forward with the only information we have. And, you know, when we get further down the road, if there are changes to that, either by Jackson County abiding by that state tax commission or, you know, court, court rulings that come into effect, then the city has an opportunity to do something called recoupment, but that is not something that we are moving forward with at this time. Real quickly, these are the budgeted amounts, you know, by, by each fund that receives that, that tax revenue. So general fund is expected to receive about $6 million next year. The Health Property Tax Fund will receive $933,000 and our Recreation Fund will receive about $1.9 million. The city's process to set the levy remains the same every year. We can only set the levy for what has been authorized for voters, so for general revenue, it's, it's $1 per $100 assessed valuation. And on our Recreation and Health Levy, it's 40 cents. We are required by state statute to hold a public hearing prior to setting the levy. We can only set the levy after we've received those final assessed valuations from Jackson County. And then once I have that amount approved by you all, I will submit to the Missouri Auditor's Office. They'll give me a pro forma calculation that I submit to them and they will review it to make sure that it follows state statute. Real quickly, we can only increase our levy by the Consumer Price Index. And so we have a very narrow increased amount that we can, you know, see an increase to our tax revenues every year. You know, in, in certain cases, in last year, we actually saw a rollback of the tax rate because the valuations increased so much. And then the only real true growth that we see in that tax is through construction and new improvements. So this year, the final levy rate compared to 2023, a house that's valued at $100,000, will see a $2.53 increase. Now, this is only for the City of Independence, so we just make up a portion of the, of the entire tax bill. So $2.53 for a $100,000 house, be $3.44 on a $136,000 house, and just over $5 on a $200,000 house. So fairly minimal increases. And then you can see here a breakdown by taxing jurisdiction on, on the real estate tax. The majority of it does go to the school district, so when you're paying your tax bill, that's where most of the money goes. And then the City of Independence makes up a small portion of that.
So just for clarity, go back to your slide there.
This one?
The orange piece is the part Independence gets, correct?
That is, and the gray is the school district, yes.
Anyone else other further questions or comments?
I do have a couple.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I know I keep bringing this up, the Hancock Amendment. Can you say it one more time for people to really understand that the city is not getting a windfall because of our constitutional restrictions?
Would be glad to. So what Councilmember McCandless is referring to is an amendment to the Missouri state constitution that was approved by voters in early 1990s, I believe. That provision holds that the, a taxing jurisdiction cannot raise revenue without a vote of the people. If we held our levy rate the same each year and assessed valuation increase, that would be an increase to our, our revenue and has been found to be in violation of the provisions of the Hancock Amendment. So every year, or every two years, when the county provides these updated assessed valuations, they do their process. We, as staff, adjust the levy rate in such a manner that it only increases by that year's Consumer Price Index. We aren't able to receive, you know, some of the terms I hear are windfall or a, you know, a rush of cash. That is not in keeping with the Missouri state constitution. So the number that will be presented to you in that ordinance has been adjusted to account for the Hancock Amendment and ensuring that our revenue growth does not exceed the Consumer Price Index.
So just, so making sure I understand, if the value of my house went up, the amount that Independence charges has to go down so that the net amount of dollars coming into the city, now Suzanne's house may have gone up a lot and mine may not have gone up, but the global amount of money can only be adjusted by the Consumer Price Index?
That is exactly right. The only two places a municipality can realize revenue growth is that Consumer Price Index amount and then any new construction that happened in the last period since that levy rate was set. So if you built a new house, then the city could, you know, receive that amount increase. But anything else, we have to adjust it to ensure we don't receive more than what we did beyond that Consumer Price Index amount.
So I get this question, a very logical question, which is the state made some rulings, the county has not yet responded. We are legally rrrr things that are in flux and we're between a rock and a hard place. What, what is the risk to the city by following our legal restrictions?
Well, our, our risk is actually greater if we did not follow our legal restrictions. If the city chose, you know, to say, well, we don't have numbers from the county, we don't have confidence in these numbers, and we just chose to not set it by October 1st, then essentially we would be saying, we're going to forego collection of property tax revenue this year. There would be none. And that's about a $6.5 to $7 million hit to the city's general fund budget. So we adopt it with the information that we have, and if the county comes back, if new information is provided, this issue with the State Tax Commission shakes out, that is where, as Ms. Sills said, the recoupment and/or clawback process comes into play. So we have a period of time in which we can adjust that levy rate to account for either errors and people weren't assessed enough, or they were over-assessed and we return funds back.
Do we have any clue when the county is going to make their determination?
We, we do not. We, we have received communication formally through, from the county executive that shared his perspective, that he felt that the State Tax Commission acted beyond their authority and they were exploring their options, but we have not heard anything since that communication came out to the taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. And then I always like to just be sure my math is correct. So when I pay my county, when I pay my taxes to the county, they're just the collector and then they remit it to the different jurisdictions, 94% of what I pay does not come to Independence. Only 6% of what I pay comes to the city. Is that a, is my math fair?
Yes, that's, that's a fair number. And that goes back to the pie graph that was just displayed moments ago.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else other further comments or questions? Anyone else other further comments or questions?
Mayor, before you open the public hearing, for the council's benefit, I just want to make a quick public acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the city has used the same notice in the paper for the public hearing. It state, we change the date every year, obviously, and we change that levy amount. We have received guidance from the Missouri Municipal League that out of an abundance of caution, we rerun that advertisement and include within it the total estimated amount of the city's portion that, that forced- that four cents on every dollar, or six cents on every dollar amount. And because we are going to take their advice out of the abundance of caution with all the oddities of the last several years, we will have on your next agenda, even though you will have the second reading, we will have a second public hearing on the agenda, again, just to be extra cautious and ensure all of our doors are covered.
And will that mean that we're actually voting on this twice or?
No, this tonight, tonight's your public hearing and your first reading. And then the ordinance for second reading will be on the meeting on the 16th. But we will have a second public hearing on that. We probably won't do the presentation again, but we'll open it up for public comment that night as well.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else other comments? Okay, thank you for that because I would have actually called for a vote tonight. So I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you. Ms. Sill, anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Thank you very much, great job. Perfect. This is a full public hearing, so you'll hear me say this three times. Does anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? This is certainly your opportunity if you want to. And just on the taxes for Jackson County, which it's been a very quiet comment issue, so I can't imagine anybody would want to comment on it now. Anybody else? Speak in favor of, opposition to, or information purposes only, second time? Third time, anyone's want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or for information purposes only? We've called it three times, we see no one, and so we will close this public hearing. All right, this brings us to our ordinance. And the first ordinance is 24-043 for a second reading. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-043, second reading and ordinance, amending Article III of Chapter V of the City Code by enacting new sections to revise and clarify the requirements for extended stay hotels. Second reading.
Anyone else other further comments or questions on that? Please proceed.
We had already asked for a postponement for 30 days and I still have remaining questions. So I would like to move for this to be postponed again for 60 days to come back to the council for consideration at that point.
It's got a motion and a second to postpone for 60 days. Any further comment on the postponement? Anyone else other comments or discussions on the postponement? There is a motion and a second on the floor. All right, with that motion and a second, we will call the roll on postponing this item 24-043 for 60 days.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-043 is postponed for 60 days. This brings us to 24-085. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-085, second reading and ordinance authorizing the 2024 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, HIDA, memorandum of understanding, MOU, for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grant award in the amount of $154,459, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24-085? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-085 passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to 24-086. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-086, second reading and ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Fairmount Loop Project, project number 112501 slash federal project number TAP-3379444. Second reading.
Any discussion on 24-086? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Fears? I'm sorry, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-086 passes six in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 24-088. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-088, second reading and ordinance adding a new Article V legal description to the Independence City Code, Chapter 10. Second reading.
Any discussion on 24-088?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would like to postpone 24-088 for, until November 4th.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone 24-088 to November 2nd. Anyone?
Fourth, November 4th.
November 4th. Of 2024. Correct, okay. Postpone this item to November 4th, 2024. Any further discussion on postponing this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll on 24-088 and postpone it till November the 4th, 2024.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item, to postpone item 24-088 to November 4th, 2024, passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-089, first reading and ordinance levying a tax on all real property subject to taxation on January 1st, 2024, within the corporate limits of the City of Independence, Missouri, for general revenue and public health recreation purposes and for the Independence Square Special Benefit District, said levies and assessments being separate and distinct, all for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July 2024 and ending on the 30th day of June 2025. First reading. 24-090, first reading and ordinance amending the Independence City Code, Section 16-01-002, license tax. First reading.
Okay, and that brings us to... And we've just been delivered a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. And so we're filling that out right now, hot off the press. And may I ask, who is receiving the proclamation for preparedness? Sam Will, all right. Very good. The City Clerk is going to read the proclamation and then we will present it, so thank you.
Whereas the National Preparedness Month is a nationwide event held each September. And whereas the goal of the National Preparedness Month is to increase awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and to encourage individuals to take action. And whereas the City of Independence will not be truly prepared for a disaster until every individual, family and business takes personal responsibility for being prepared. And whereas all residents of the City of Independence should take steps to prepare for emergencies as residents must have the ability to care for themselves and their loved ones for an extended period of time during an emergency, such as making a plan, building an emergency kit and learning more about the disaster preparedness. And whereas the City of Independence also officially recognizes the many volunteers involved with the Medical Reserve Corps of the Greater Kansas City, the Independence Community Emergency Response Team, the Emergency Communications Service Group and command staff volunteers who routinely offer their invaluable services to make our community safer. Now therefore, I, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Preparedness Month. And I call upon the city of, the people of the City of Independence to join their fellow residents across the state of, across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Independence to be affixed this third day of September 2024.
Thank you. And Sam, I'll come around and present this just for a second, but I want to congratulate you for all the work that you do. I know when we have bad weather, you get the privilege of staying up all night. And we as citizens in this city appreciate your extra effort on that. Cannot say thank you enough for the work that you do. And so on behalf of the city, I would love to give you this proclamation for all the hard work that you do in getting us prepared. So, thank you. And that will bring us to Councilmember Comments. So Councilmember Stewart, you are first up.
I don't have any other nightmare, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fears, how about yourself?
Just, well done to the chamber and city staff on Santa Calagon. I know my family participated. We enjoyed that and it was a good event all the way around. So just kudos to those that pulled that off because that's no small undertaking.
Very good. Councilmember Vaught?
I just wanted to take a minute to address the exciting news of the FIFA World Cup coming to our region in 2026. 645 days away, to be exact. There will be six matches hosted here from June 11th through July 10th, including a quarterfinal match. The city, but also surrounding communities. The World Cup is one of the largest sporting events in the world and its impact will reach far beyond the stadiums. For Independence, this means a boost to our local economy. Visitors from around the globe will be exploring our area, staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants and experiencing the unique history and culture that Independence has to offer. We have to be proactive in preparing our city to welcome these visitors. Furthermore, this is an opportunity to showcase Independence as a destination. I am looking forward to working with the city staff and the 18-member committee as we begin our preparation so that Independence can be successful in this once-in-a-lifetime event. And I am really excited for this incredible opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
I want to follow on to what Councilmember Vaught said. A number of us went down to the Kansas City Chamber and were there to be able to understand what other municipalities are going to need to do for FIFA. Chief Desmond was there. City Manager Zach Walker was there. Sam Morris was there. So you can see the number of resources it's going to take for us to be able to welcome all of these folks to the city. I want to give a special shout out to Three Trails Camp that just celebrated their 100th year anniversary. Their event was well attended, it was lovely. And Santa Calagon, special thanks to the police and fire. Citizens came up and talked to your members there. So it was just, not just from the safety standpoint, but a lovely outreach event for our citizens to get to interact with your team. So thank you for that. Special yippee for us getting some transformers, which we have been waiting on, so yay. And my last item is that I will happily be going on vacation. So if you have any problems while I'm gone, call Councilmember Jared Fears, who's the other at-large member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Did you change your phone number to 1-800? Did you change your phone number to 1-800 ON THE BEACH? No, okay. Very good. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of thanks. It was fun being at Santa Calagon. I was actually off Monday, which is kind of unheard of in the grocery business. So I took full advantage of the nice, beautiful weather that was ordered. So definitely appreciate that. A big thanks to the chamber. You know, they're working their butts off to make an event go well and go great. And I think they had a great turnout. Talked a little bit with some of our folks. I think overall, I think we did a pretty good job. Few hiccups, but nothing, nothing major. I think one of the exciting things that is going to take place next year during Santa Calagon is the unveiling or hopefully the new Independence Square streets gate should be completed. We're, I believe we're going to start construction in February-ish of 2025, which is not far around the corner. And I believe the completion date is certainly before Santa Calagon. So we're going to have some new sidewalks, some new amenities. So it'll be fun to watch. I too was at the FIFA meeting several weeks ago. And I don't know about my colleagues. We've talked a little bit and some of the staff on the sidebar. I am awestruck at the magnitude and size of this apparatus the Federation is bringing to the United States in this region. I am excited, as well as Councilwoman Vaught. And I'm glad you're the representative from the council to that committee. So thank you for that. I am, I was just shocked and amazed. And we had some sidebar conversations about the magnitude for all the security reasons, economic reasons, support reasons. So I am looking forward to seeing how our city and you, Mr. City Manager, rise to this challenge. Yeah, you're welcome. That's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of things. Today I went to the Daughters of America Resolution Revolution Pioneer Chapter. They celebrated their 110th anniversary today. So they commemorated that. And then also people asked me about the weather at the Chamber of Commerce and on Santa Calagon, did the council have anything to do with that? Yes, we did. If you'll remember, we privately passed a resolution two weeks ago saying we have weather like that and it worked out perfectly. So we have to take credit for the weather. And then also, the other item that we did over the weekend was, and if I can bring it up on my calendar here, was Samoan Flag Day. And the Samoan community celebrated the Flag Day. It was a great, they just make you, councilmembers, you've got to go to it because they make you feel so welcome. They do a meeting in their native tongue. Fortunately, I had somebody who sat next to me and interpreted for me and told me what was going on. It was absolutely fascinating. They're incredibly welcoming. They also, for the sake of clarity and disclosure, they gave me a cash recognition. I'm going to give that to Community Service Leagues as a notice. Everybody gets notice here that I took that, but on their behalf, I'm going to give it to CSL. So I just wanted to do that. So any, we'll just do that. Then I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. City Manager. Any closing comments for today?
Just very quickly, Mayor. Thank you to the council for your recognition of staff's work on Santa Calagon. There's obviously the four-day festival, but there's a lot of preparatory work that goes in in the days and weeks leading up and frankly, the months. And then today, our staff is up there helping with returning of jersey barriers, taking down the temporary power supply things. A lot of stuff I'm going to leave off. But just really appreciate the recognition of the staff that works behind the scenes to help make that a successful event for our Chamber of Commerce. Speaking of cleaning up, I saw the crews from Independence Together up on the square today doing some tidying up after the festival. That group celebrated a recent milestone. They have now collected over 600,000 pounds of trash in our community, cleaning up our roadways and our green spaces in addition to the individuals who have found permanent housing as a result of this program. So continued success there. And then just want to mention, I know the Audit and Finance Committee recently had a report from the management analyst about our business licensing, business concierge services in the city. Couple of highlights for you of things that are moving along. You can now visit independencemo.gov/business. And there's a lot of good information there, particularly for small business owners looking to open up shop in the city or in collaboration with the Innovation Center. There's a lot of information about developing your business plan and what you need to do to have a successful launch of a business. So encourage folks to look at that. And then we are close as a city to launching an online portal for all things business licensing, permitting, plan review, et cetera. So that will allow the development community to interact with the city at the time and place and location of their choosing without having to come to City Hall and interact with staff. So we're excited. So we're, we're excited to be taking that launch forward and further improve our customer service. Mr. Mayor, that is all I had this evening.
No, anyone else? Okay. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.